Welcome to the December 4th, 2019 Board of Commissioners' Meeting, Special Meeting. Please silence all your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers if you do have a speaker request. Or we do have speaker requests forms at the back of the chambers here on the bookcases. Ms. Hawley will take those speaker requests from you if you'd like to speak. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Michelle Hoffman today. Thank you, Michelle. First, we'll have a review and approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Drew, second by DeSanto.
Oh, Lucre. Lucre.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next will be the public hearing, amendment for Pennington County Comprehensive Plan, Pennington County Comprehensive View to 2040, to amend and supersede Pennington County's existing comprehensive plan. I think what works best, if you could help us out, Brittany, of the process and procedure that you have been through with this before and what you think we should do today.
Good morning, Commissioner Brittany Molliter. The Planning Commission went section by section and then voted essentially on each section. So, we could either go each page and if there's any comments or concerns on each page, or we could just do it by section and then make a motion on each section and any amendments that we have on each section. And Jerry's gonna take notes on any of those amendments and make those changes moving forward in the document.
Board, are we okay going page by page and pulling things off that we decide that we might want to discuss?
I think in most cases, or in some cases, at least for the first two sections, we could probably vote on the sections and then go page by page.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to pull something out of Section 1 or Section 2.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see how they... Okay, I see what you're saying, go like 1-1, 1-2. Is the board okay with that by sections then?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Let's start then, Ms. Brittany, do we start? You tell me anything I'm missing, how about that, Miss Brittany?
Section 1 is the introduction. It just basically goes through the purpose, how the comprehensive plan was brought about, just some regional and local context, how the community was involved in this process of developing this document, how the comprehensive plan can be maintained in the future, and just how it's organized as a document. So, that's the introduction, which is Section 1.
So, Ms. Brittany, I have an updated version, the last edits from the Planning Commission, clean version, all edited incorporated. Which one are we doing?
So, what is on the screen right now is the clean version. Those were all of the recommendations from the Planning Commission incorporated into the document.
So, the clean version, all edits incorporated, is what we're going through today. We all got that copy with the stamped in the front?
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty. Thank you, Ms. Brittany.
So, are you looking for a motion to approve the introduction section unless you want to pull something?
I don't think we need a motion at this point. We're gonna do motion by changes, am I correct?
Or you could do a motion by section and then that way that section is approved and then... Because I think if we go back, it might be confusing trying to remember some of the changes. And that way Jerry's clear on what the changes are and the motions on the changes in each section.
And I apologize, I... That's what I meant, but thank you, Ms. Brittany. Lloyd, did you understand that so?
Yeah.
You'll go it by section and then motion by section?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Right, Jerry? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lloyd. Kira?
Yeah.
You with us? Alrighty. So, we just start with purpose?
And 1, if there's any proposed changes, if the commission has any questions or concerns on this section, or any changes that they propose. If not, just accepting the Planning Commission recommendation with the changes in the clean version of Section 1.
Okay, we have 1-1, Purpose of Comprehensive Plan, do we have any discussion or changes? We'll give them a minute in case they haven't read it all. Good morning, Brian.
I have none.
Anytime somebody would like to make a motion?
Move to approve Section 1, second.
Moved by Lucre, second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Section 1-2, Comprehensive Plan Process.
No, I thought...
I think their motion was to cover...
The whole section.
The whole section.
Yeah.
The whole section of 1.
The whole section, so 1-1 through 1-6.
Section 1-2, instead of... What you meant by section is literally only 1, not by 1-2, 1-3. Okay, I apologize. Alright, we're in Section 2.
Section 2 is the planning framework. This does include the vision statement for the comprehensive plan. This vision statement was put together by the public. There was a workshop, several workshops, where they kind of put together some goals and some visions that they have as part of citizens of the county. And this is what our consultant had come up with and what the Planning Commission is recommending as our vision statement. The second section is the focus areas. Those are important in moving forward in this. It separates the county into three separate sections. We'll have a Black Hills area focus section, Central Pennington focus section, and Eastern Plains. And as we get further down in the document, you'll see certain goals and objectives that'll apply in certain areas of the county more seldom than in others. And then it goes through and explains some of these and why the differences. Obviously, we have three very distinct areas in our county. We have a municipal hub type center, we have hills, and we have plains. So, that kind of goes through the different sections. Then there's some maps, and that's basically Section 2.
Well, Brittany, I appreciate that we did do this in three different sections only because we have three different areas and we were trying to handle each one exactly the same, which hasn't been working. For land use, for septic, for many things, that's gonna be huge for Pennington County to be able to differentiate between the three areas and what's happening in those areas that are unique to each area, so I think that's pretty awesome.
Adam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd motion to approve Section 2.
Section 2, approved by Commissioner Drews, we have a second.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Land use designation and standards in number 3.
Section number 3 is where we start to get into the different types of land use and separating the different land uses in the county. The designations within the county are broken up in a much bigger type of scheme, I guess, for lack of better terms. Right now, we have very succinct and small zoning districts. This kind of expands some of those zoning districts and land use areas throughout the county. If you look at on page 3-3, like with the agriculture, right now, we have two separate types of agriculture, which is limited agriculture and general agriculture. And they're separated by the types of, or the size of acreage. So, it's 10 and 40, or this egg designation, the minimum is 10. So, you could separate this out into, for zoning districts, even into a more... Or I guess a tighter designation, or you could just leave egg. And then those are the types of uses that are allowed in those zoning districts.
We're losing the limited egg.
Correct, it'll just be 1-a designation. And then if you look down in some of the residential designations, where right now, we just have low-density residential and suburban residential. And with looking at how a lot of the land is being used in the county, the ranchette residential, the rural residential, some of those bigger acreages, also how people are using their property. They like to have a horse or two, or goats, or chickens, or anything like that. So, that kind of takes into consideration some of those land uses, and those are 3 to 5 acres. And then you get into your tighter residential districts, low-density residential, suburban residential, and then urban residential allows for more multifamily apartments, things like that. The plan, one thing to note, the plan unit development will essentially go away. That will no longer be a zoning district. All of the current plan unit developments will be basically ratified and they will stand. But most of the uses and things like that under the plan unit development will be done through conditional use permits instead of zoning designation change.
Okay.
So...
I have one question.
Sure.
Brian, did I miss something? I can't figure out where you want to speak, Brian. If you want to come up for a second so I know where you want to speak when we get there? Or you want to come up to the mic for just a sec?
What sections are you...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't figure what...
It's okay, good morning. Brian Tiedemann with Pete Lean and Sons. In this section, I just had one very, very minor comment for consideration. So, on page 3-13, L-U-H 9.1, it talks about ensuring that it reflects the needs and desires of those who live, work, and vacation in Pennington County to be consistent with the vision which was approved in Section 2. I think it'd be applicable to add something about those who own property within Pennington County.
Brian, I just got to that page, which part?
L-U-H-9.1.
So, Brian, people that own property, so you have, that reflects the needs and desires of those who live, work, and vacation in Pennington County?
Well, but it excludes landowners. There's no mention of landowners.
And own property?
Or 9.1.
You're on page 3-13. And then L-U-H 9.1 at the bottom of the page, second sentence up. Brian believes that we need to put landowners in there somewhere?
That makes sense.
How do we fit it in? Do you have... Anybody have a suggestion?
I think you can probably clarify that by just simply saying it reflects the needs and desires of landowners and those who live, work, and vacation in Pennington County.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah, I agree.
Everybody got that?
Some move. Our second.
Moved by Lucre, second by DeSanto. Put landowners and DeSanto, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Adam Chair.
Commissioner?
Brittany, the PUD, I've praised in real estate for 30 years. I've run in some really unique properties. And the PUD essentially took care of these really atypical properties. So, if we get rid of the PUD and there's a property that's currently under a PUD and they want to go to their designated class that would... What class would they... Then you're gonna... I don't, that's why they did the PUD, so you're automatically... I don't see any reason why they'd ever want to switch because you're not gonna find any category that would fit a lot of these atypical properties.
Right, and I think what they were trying to do is, when we had worked with a consultant, a lot of agents or a lot of communities are going away from the plan unit development. And that's why we've expanded a lot of our other districts to allow some of those different uses. PUDs, most of the PUDs are like recreational resort type communities. Right now, you know, we have highway service and general commercial. Now, we're just gonna go to more of a neighborhood commercial that would encompass some of that. I think that with the zoning districts, when we get into the zoning ordinance, where you actually have permitted uses and conditional uses, some of those unique situations could be addressed in those, under those permitted uses and conditional uses. Because that's the way, you know, with working with our consultants, some of the communities are going, they're using them as conditional uses instead of a whole different zoning district. So, you would be in a, an A district with a conditional use for recreational, kind of like what we do now. But instead of creating like a one-mat PUD or, you know, a small PUD just to have like a commercial property, there's a lot of them in our county right now that are recreational resorts that are, they could be highway service, but they have a couple uses that might not be in our districts and things like that. So, they didn't really fit them all, so they just automatically went to a PUD. And I'm trying to get away from that kind of practice and go more to sticking with the zoning districts with a conditional use permit.
So, Ron's right, for PUDs, it's, Brittany, it's only not for recreational resorts, it's for unique areas in development. And also, I don't know if I'm okay with having everything conditional use because even in the city, we had, remember, Lloyd Lovin's 619s? And those 11-619s conditioned everything. To a certain extent, it made it unique for each area, but it also became a headache in a sense, doing, having to do a conditional use and then do a zoning and then do a, you know what I mean? Multiple steps where I think we're trying to get away from multiple-stepping people in order to help them through the process. That makes sense, Brittany.
And this was the proposal, and if that's not something that this commission wants to do moving forward and keep that zoning designation, that's, you know...
Here's an example, yesterday, we were asked to approve an amendment to a PUD on the Deerfield Road by the High Country Guest Ranch. There was four lots. And so, we approved that amendment to the PUD. Now, if that group says we want to get out of the PUD, would you zone them highway service and then apply a conditional use permit? Is that how you're gonna handle that?
That's how the consultant, when we put together this document and the previous planning director worked on handling those kinds of situations.
Is there a benefit to going this route to the conditional use, conditional use permit opposed to PUD? Because if I want to, if there's a PUD and it's a fairly major amendment, then you got to go through a major amendment process, which is a lot different than a minor amendment process. So, if I have a conditional use permit and I want to change the platform of that permit, is that gonna be a lot easier to do that in the future opposed to make an amendment to the PUD?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question. That would be probably depending upon what the request is, where the request is, the sitting authority at that time.
I just keep thinking the reason they did PUDs because they needed that designation for these really atypical properties. And I just wonder if we're, by creating the conditional use, we already have conditional use permits. I just, it's, I don't know, I've always liked the PUDs because it handles the problem when we don't have the solution for a particular zoning type.
Right, and a PUD is a zoning designation and not a use permit. So, there's, it's a different process and a different, you know, it allows, like you said, unique circumstances, so...
That's, that's the bottom line, is how you're gonna handle, like, some things that we've already had in PUDs. How we handle it now, what that process is to get there, and also, how much money is that? And how many other weeks to get through this piece, this piece, and this piece? Because that's what I'm saying, the process, if I have to go do a conditional use, then I have to go pay for a major amendment and do that, and then maybe I need to do something with the plant. If a PUD makes that process easier, that's, I think, what Ron's saying and I'm saying at this point is we're trying to make the process so it's more defined in one sense, but the other, that it simplifies it for your department and the customer that comes in that needs to do something unique for his property. So, maybe we could have, before we say no PUDs, we can have some examples in how we're going to handle those certain examples that we already have in our PUDs.
Okay. And like I said, I can speak with Rick about that, and I'll make that note on this. And then coming to the next hearing on the 18th, we can come back to this section if...
And you can use, you can use my property for an example. I said I want to get out of my PUD because it's too restrictive.
What do you mean?
Tell me what you're gonna zone me.
Okay.
And tell me what I'd have to do to go, with our property, what would we have to do to go to one of the zoning criteria? And then, and then how complex would that conditional use permit be? And if I wanted to make amendments to that down the road, would that be easier than the PUD process?
Okay.
Mark?
Brittany, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't a, a PUD is less restrictive than a CUP? Because the PUD doesn't have to be renewed annually, see, and a conditional use permit does, correct?
No, the conditional use permits are reviewed, but they're discretionary, where a PUD is actually a zone, like you're zoned.
So, there is, so it's not reviewed. Once it's a PUD, it's a PUD.
Well, they can be reviewed, they're reviewed typically, they do the same kind of review process, like a 3 to 5, and then it goes to a complaint basis only. Or unless that community wants to come back and change something because the needs of their community have changed.
Whereas a conditional use permit is reviewed annually, is it not?
It's usually reviewed 1, 3, 5, and then it's typically reviewed.
It's based on complaint, but a PUD is not based on complaint that it would be brought back up, right?
Typically, it's more difficult because the PUD, when you look at the conditions that are set forth in a PUD, they more, they have to do more with land use. They're like, we're gonna have 10 stick builds and we're gonna have, you know, things like that. Where a conditional use permit is that you have to do these, 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 these things to maintain that use.
That's why I said...
So, that's kind of the, that's how, in my mind, I see it. One's kind of more, the conditions are more geared towards how, what uses are allowed and how those uses are applied in that district versus a conditional use permit is, it's kind of a anomaly, but it kind of fits, but it doesn't really fit. And it's, most of the time, it's temporary, except for single wides.
What I'm seeing is, if it's a PUD, then you can do a land use on it. But then we put conditions on that, on the land use, that we make exceptions for. So, and then they don't have to be reviewed because they reviewed by planning, then us, they're good. So, then if you do a land use with a conditional use permit, if you have, you still have the land use of the PUD, but conditional use permit puts those conditions on it, but it also could make it easier for someone to complain and say, well, Lloyd, you know, you have three cars parked out front, this, you should only have two on this conditional use permit. So, they start picking, the 11-619s are basically where conditional use permits, but they start picking those to death, and then you had bring them back and start adding more conditions in order for those people to make their... So, you're basically doing a PUD anyway. Makes sense, except that you're making it so Lloyd can do his property without thinking, Mark, every other week, because he doesn't care for Lloyd and his property, come in and complain.
Well, on the, on the, in this text, it says the PUD can be grandfathered in. Now, definition of grandfathered, I'm assuming, is perpetual. Where does grandfather end? Where's that? Where is the end of the grandfather clause? Is it the new millennial, or is it forever, or just when we decide it ends? That's really what I'd like to know because in the PUD, it says you're grandfathered in, so I'm assuming it means forever. A condition use permit, I don't feel that comfort level that it can, that it can change upon the decision of the county or others. That's where I have a little bit of a problem with the conditional use permit, that it isn't as legally binding as the PUD.
The way I read it, the PUD grandfathered, would be grandfathered until it was changed to something else. Once it's changed to something else, it can't be changed back to the PUD.
And the whole reason to have that PUD is because you're gonna be wanting changes. That's why you, so now, we're gonna tell them, okay, you're stuck where you're at. Now, we're gonna have you do a new process if you want change. You're not just gonna come for a minor or a major amendment on the PUD. You're gonna come through the process where you're gonna have a new land zone change, and now you're gonna have a conditional use permit under those things. And that's where you're gonna start making your changes.
Right, and to address Ron's, his concern also, that the difference between a minor and major amendment is also causing us to have to notice and hearings and, you know...
Adam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, Brittany, I think you understand what the, what the questions are. I think instead of spending more time on it, we ask her to go back to Rust or whoever you need to go to and bring the issue to them and see what kind of a recommendation they'd bring back for us to reconsider.
Okay.
Everybody, yep, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Just so you have an understanding kind of where we're going to, that's what this discussion is about, is we're talking about land use, we're talking about process, fees, how many times you have to come back. Or maybe we could do a PUD if you can find a solution with that, maybe PUD with something else. Brittany, you might, you've been here long enough too, you might be able to help him figure out that solution just from listening to what we're, we're saying today.
Correct, and we also have our zoning ordinance that does have that PUD section, and we could shore up some of those concerns in that document also.
Thank you.
The reason this is sensitive to me is because in 2000, Marsha Alkum's come out and told me my property's non-compliant. And she said, to get this in compliant, you have to do a PUD. I have a binder that's three inches thick of the requirements that I had to go through. And it was, it took an act of Congress. And the PUD has worked for 25, 30 years. And I just wondered why we'd decide to change this process if we're, if it's really necessary.
Thank you. So, the only change in this Section 3 so far is to ask about the PUDs and then the landowner change on L-U-H 9.1. Any other discussion? If not, do you...
Table that section for...
That'd be a good idea.
I'd move that we table that section until we have the additional information.
Okay.
Second.
Table Section 3, am I correct?
Excuse me, Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office. I just wanted to make one observation with regard to the plan unit development. I think it does lend itself to the potential of spot zoning. My understanding is this comp plan assigns certain uses, future uses that are envisioned for a particular property. I don't believe you're taking, saying a certain section of property, saying we're gonna assign this as a future use PUD. What I think may happen on occasion is a property owner wants to make a use of property that's not allowed or is not within the scheme or the intent of the possible conditional uses. So, an applicant might come in and say, well, I want to do something completely different, so let's just do a PUD. And what you end up having then is creating almost spot zoning. We're gonna create in a commercial area a PUD, or we're gonna create in limited egg a PUD, and that could entail uses that are not envisioned within the current zoning. So, I've also been listening to your questions, and I'll also sit down with Brittany and be part of that meeting to try and address your questions. But that's just one concern I have from a legal standpoint.
Bottom line is, we, that's why you probably have a PUD, is so you can spot zone and put something somewhere that might fit that really normally wouldn't go in that designation.
But spot zoning is illegal. And that's my concern, is spot zoning is not allowed. So, that's my concern.
Most of the PUDs, like I said, have a mixed use, and that's kind of the, and otherwise, they'd have three, four conditional use permits. We just met with a landowner yesterday that currently has three CUPs on his property right now for one structure. And trying to, so, trying to figure out how he fits, you know, a plan unit development is really the only way to, to do that.
But isn't spot zoning, if we, it's all ag and we do limited ag in the middle of it, isn't spot zoning, we have suburban residential with one low density in the middle? We have that all over.
Well, I think, and PJ, I know he's not here today, can better address this issue, but the idea of a comp plan is that the citizens of Pennington County, when they buy a piece of property, they know that, okay, this is designated limited residential. And the future use of the property around, around my property is limited residential. So, in 20 years, I don't expect to have an asphalt batch plant erected next to me. So, there's a reason for a comp plan, and that is, that is overarching plan in terms of property development. And so, again, when you start spot zoning, you start ignoring... And so again, when you start spot zoning, you, you start ignoring your property development plan. And so these are just some issues, I haven't, I haven't done a lot of research into those issues. I certainly can research the issue of spot zoning as well, so I can better inform, uh, the commission as to those legal concerns. But again, um, I think it's a good idea to take a closer look at this to see what we may do for the property owners, but at the same time, make sure that we're legally, we're, um, doing what's correct.
Right, the bottom line is, um, this is a guide, Michelle, it's not set in stone. So that's why a lot of times, based on politics and land ownership, a lot of times, this guide is, is trying to be followed in one sense, and the other, um, probably will be changed accordingly for those two reasons, just from experience. So maybe it'd be good to look up maybe the spot zoning system. Any discussion?
Well, you know, like, like, I think of our property, it's an income-producing property, it's three miles from the highway, so. Is it highway service? Is it recreational? Give me an answer there. I mean, that's why you need PUDs. Because it needs to be, if I yanked it out of a PD, I can't call it highway service because I'm three miles from highway. It's a commercial property, general commercial. That's why I think we gotta really be careful before we, uh, we need to have some kind of an, uh, uh, an escape route. And the PUD has worked pretty effectively, and I think in the future, you don't want to create really unique properties, but the ones that are in existence, I think you have to have some method to handle the situation.
Yep, all right, kids, so, um, at this point, we've tabled it by Drews, second by DeSanto, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brittany, I think you got where we're going. Thank you, Michelle.
That's section number four, is the economic development element. Um, the first section goes over the economic development overview of the county. Um, the consultant looked at, um, the different, the existing workforce, um, where people are working, um, in the area. Um, looks like tourism, agriculture, the regional airport, the air force base, and the regional health or the main, um,
Islet.
Yeah, employment in, uh, Pennington County. So that, and then just goes over some goals and policies, um, that's on section four-four. Um, just some goals that are set forth, uh, in this comprehensive plan, so I know that there was a lot of comments on those.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
Uh, one thing that I see under tourism, uh, Mount Rushmore is the, you know, it's the anchor for tourism, the Black Hills. And then we got a lot of gift shops on Main Street and Sturgis and Hill City and Keystone, and we got a lot of attractions like, uh, Bear Country and Reptile Gardens. But I don't see a lot of emphasis on hunting and fishing and hiking. I've just glanced through this, but I, I think we need to focus more on that Mickelson Trail and the, in the lakes that are in the Black Hills, and the fishing opportunities, and the hunting opportunities, because it's a subcategory of tourism, but I think that is what makes the Black Hills so special. And I don't really see a lot of emphasis on that throughout this document.
You could stick it somewhere in the tourism, tourism column on page four-three. The wording that you're talking about, Commissioner Roskinick, tourist draws like Mount Rushmore, National Memorial, events like Sturgis Rally, um, something to do with hunting, fishing, that kind of thing, hiking, biking in the Black Hills. Could probably, I'm gonna guess, be added somewhere in there, Ms. Brittany?
In section two, there's, uh, plenty of room, they had a little paragraph on our recreational opportunities.
Madam Chair, I think, I think we could probably approve the section on the condition that some of that gets rewrote and, and at our next meeting, then we can come back to just that section, don't you think?
We could do that.
Instead of skipping it.
Unless somebody has some wording to help us actually just add that, yeah.
I think they'd take a little bit of time to add in to some of that other stuff, but I mean, they could present it at the next meeting, then we could easily approve it then, but I think the rest of the section.
I think Brittany should come up with the wording and just tell us right now.
Brittany has the, uh, Forest Service had an opportunity to review this.
Uh, that I do not know.
I think that would really be something, you know, because we're gonna, the most of the land on the Black Hills is, uh, federal property, so I would think that they should have an opportunity to glance over to see, before we get too far in this, to see if they have any comments or additions.
So through economic development, um, do we want to table tourism, or do we want to table economic development? Or page four-three, basically, are what, what areas are affected by economic development?
I would say page four-three, um, first paragraph.
That, Commissioner Roskinick, would that, um, suffice putting the Forest Service in that area?
I, yeah, I would say, uh, expand on tourism.
Okay. So do we have a motion for section four?
All moved.
Moved by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by LaCroy?
That would be to approve section four with the exception of page four-three, paragraph one.
Yeah, okay, on tourism. Okay.
Section five is the agricultural element. Um, it goes over the agricultural overview of our county, uh, that we have a large agricultural community on the eastern side of the county. We also have a, a pretty significant timber industry on the west side. The county, it goes over production enhancement, compatibility with land uses in the area, and then some goals and policies of the county, um, relating to the agricultural element.
Under five-one, paragraph two, production enhancement, I don't think that they meant additionally hay and corn for grain are also prevalent, and corn for feed. Probably more appropriate.
Is wheat for grain?
They're just talking about top crops?
Yeah, they're just talking about the crops that we grow and what their usage is, and, um, winter wheat for grain, wheat for grain, that is understandable, wheat is a grain. But additionally, the hay and corn is for, grain can be ma, used, can be utilized for many purposes. Making bread, flour, that type of stuff, or feed, but I think that they meant, I don't know, but additionally, hay and corn for grain are also prevalent? Hay and corn would be?
Just hay.
For feed.
Feed.
For feed?
I might be getting nitpicky, but.
Maybe we just look at that and.
Right, grain and add feed?
Whatever makes that paragraph add into that it's for feed and not for.
Grain.
Upside or, they're talking about the grain is also, those two are also prevalent, it doesn't say for what use, it just says they're prevalent as well. It could be prevalent and not have to say feed.
That's true.
Meaning they're, they're important, but it, it's not exactly naming it what they're important for. Do we have to make a motion for that change, Holly? Okay.
So I would make a motion, uh, to change section five, paragraph two, last sentence to additionally hay and corn for feed are also prevalent.
Second.
There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Anything else on item agricultural element in five?
I would move to approve the rest of section five.
Moved by LaCroy for approval of section five, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six.
Section six is transportation and circulation element. Um, it just discusses the transportation system in Pennington County, uh, the tourism traffic throughout the hills, uh, the scenic byways, um, we do not have a scenic byway program, um, right now, um, as far as in our ordinance or through our office, um, but they are, you know, looking at maybe suggesting some kind of scenic byways program um, in the future, and then the trail and, um, bicycle systems and Mickelson Trail, and so the trails along Rabbit Creek as part of this section.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
On the, uh, map, Brittany, on six-three,
Okay.
Uh, the light brown is categorized as, uh, county scenic route.
Mm-hmm.
With the, uh, South Rochford Road in the process of, uh, land acquisition, uh, there being pieces of property being purchased, so we can expand on the South Rochford Road. Would this be a time to color that in as well, because that's the whole primary purpose of that, was for, uh, scenic, or more of a scenic drive?
The Rochford Road project?
The South Rochford Road. I'm assuming that, uh, it will get completed. Because we go to Deerfield, so if we just went from Deerfield to Rochford, I think, that would, uh, two or three years, that hopefully won't be the way that looks.
Is it designated that right now?
No.
It's just that we put it.
Yep, it looks like the Deerfield, the Hill City to Deerfield is a county scenic route designation. It looks like Highway three eighty-five, um, is a scenic route, forty-four, sixteen.
So not legally recognized as scenic routes?
Uh, well, just as a point of this document, it wasn't recognized as a scenic route. They had three eighty-five, sixteen, sixteen, and Deerfield Road.
So they want those to end up being scenic routes, is that why they're putting it on here now?
Those, those are just the suggestions in this document for the scenic routes, areas where, you know, most of the tourism traffic and things are.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Possibility that South Rochford Road could not be included because we don't own all of South Rochford Road. Mile and a half of it is owned by Payes Law.
Mm-hmm.
They may not be agreeable to their mile and a half being a scenic byway.
I think we're gonna find out that state scenic byway that we just approved instead of, uh, might be a federal, could be different changes than we thought when we approved it, and we are looking into that. Um, just gonna tell you all before we call anything a scenic byway, at this point, I think we need all the information because Payes Law would be probably just like the reservation, uh, federal. So there's, we're finding that statement, Holly, thank you for looking all that up, um, it wasn't a big deal, but now we're finding that the federal, through Custer County, they tabled what we approved. We might be bringing that forward again, because based on, um, some of the information that I've been listening to and going to get all the information, um, federal's different, so there could be a taking on some of the land on the scenic byway of the landowners. There's also areas that, uh, you can't put certain things on scenic byways.
Right.
And some of those things have it, and they probably grandfathered in, but to put them in there in the future would not be okay. So, long story short, um, I don't think we should call them scenic byways till they're scenic byways designated. That'd be, I would, I would like it because scenic sounds like something that you drive and it'd be very nice to look at, but it shouldn't be called that designation until it's legally that designation, I believe. It could confuse people that are looking at land use on this property with what they can do on a scenic byway.
Yeah, my only point that I brought that up is because where that ends, uh, Deerfield is right where the pavement ends, and so if that is paved in the future, uh, it would just make sense for that to extend, uh, like the pavement.
Well, this doesn't, this doesn't say anything about that we can't add scenic byways in the future.
Right, it just says that.
Actually, it actually.
Just a point of interest.
The main thing that says scenic byways, we're just making sure that people don't, because this is a map they're gonna be looking at that says scenic byway, that they aren't designated as scenic byways until they're legally called scenic byways.
Gotcha.
Based on that information, which I will make sure I get, I'm having a guy look it all up for you. Thank you. So that, that'd be a change, I think.
That one needs change.
I would move to approve unit or, uh, section five.
Or six, wasn't it?
Five.
Five, six, we're on six.
Six, we're on six.
We're on six.
Oh, we're on six.
Yes.
Second.
And that we, with the change that, that it, those aren't on the map as scenic byways? Would I change that motion? Do I have to make the motion to change that they're not designated as scenic byways on this map, Brittany, in order for that not to happen? So that would be my motion, and then by the time we come back to, okay, I can't talk at the same time. So that would be my motion, is to take it off scenic byway, uh, designation off this map until we have the correct information.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Are you substituting his, because they have a motion on the floor, so are you doing another motion?
Motion to approve, my motion was to approve.
Can I amend your motion?
Sure, amend my motion.
Okay, with the amendment of taking off the scenic byway designation off this map.
The motion maker is okay with that?
Thank you.
About the seconder?
And that was just for Rochford Road?
That before the.
All of it?
Identified as scenic byway.
Yeah, that isn't scenic byway legally, basically, Lloyd?
The, the only thing, other thing I'll point out is under legend road, uh, classification, uh, that, uh, South Rochford Road on this map is, uh, indicated as gravel. So if this is gonna be for the future, twenty years from now, we wanna change it to a local road, which is gonna be a darker shade.
Sure, is that another amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have two.
Would be appropriate.
Two amendments, um, the scenic byway and the gravel to local road or whatever you, future, however you say that, Brittany.
Could be a local road?
You can ask Highway just to make sure that we designate if it's local or whatever they call that, county road or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it'll be when it's finished.
Yes, ma'am, okay, so we have two amendments, um, to this motion of approval on number six. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, item number seven is public services and facilities element. Uh, it goes over the infrastructure within the county, uh, the different water districts, uh, our stormwater management program, and, uh, wastewater usage in the county. Um, the map designates the different municipalities, incorporated municipalities, locations of fire stations. It's just, um, our public services, what our county actually provides services for the citizens.
That's a nice map. You have a motion or discussion?
Move to approve section seven.
By LaCroy? Second by Hadcock, discussion?
Give me a minute.
No problem.
May I have more comments?
Brittany?
Yes.
When we look at, uh, goal PSF dash five, and then look at the five point one, where it says the county should evaluate the facility needs identified in the two thousand and ten facilities master plan to plan for future facility expansion? Is that something that we should be transferring over into this plan?
Um, actually, there was some discussion, um, I've had some meetings at the city, uh, what they look at, and, I, I mean, do you know about the one-mile jurisdiction for the septic? Uh, a lot of that has, is tied into that facilities master plan, because. Cause they look at where they're gonna put water in sewer. So we as a county, because of their three mile plating jurisdiction and their one mile septic jurisdiction. They're looking at areas that might be zoned appropriately. So if we're allowing smaller density um, areas that they would have future water in sewer uh, in those areas. So that's kinda what that looks at. It, you don't wanna have a high density zoning area or a high density plant in an area. That probably isn't gonna in the future have water in sewer. So that's kinda the general statement, that's, that's how I understand it. And with meeting with some of the folks at the city, um, looking at where we're zoning and our future zoning designations and matching it with that facilities plan. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm, thank you. Here's a really generic question.
Sure.
I noticed the, when the planning commission went through this, there's a lot of shalls and shoulds got switched around, so. Can you just explain really what the shall means and the should means so that uh?
A shall is definitive, a should is a suggestion.
Which, which one's more binding?
Michelle's my shall and should.
But there's, I don't see too many wills.
Shall we have you speak or should we have you speak?
Shall is uh, it's similar to must. You must um, comply with this requirement. Should is kind of like a recommendation.
So shall's just a nice way of saying you will.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I'm on the same page.
And if you really want to get nitpicky, should never say shall not. Shall should, shall should be used only in uh, the positive affirmative context.
Thank you.
This is the shall, shoulda, coulda, woulda document.
Thank you for that English question.
That's why I told PJ, I was like, this is shall, shoulda, coulda, woulda document.
So my concern lies in section uh, page seven two, the last section. It was my understanding that one of the reasons that we made these separate de- designations, the three separate de- designations in the county.
Mm-hmm.
Or folk, or do we call them focus areas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the three separate focus areas. I think that those need to be referred to because if it's, if I'm correct in what I heard from PJ. Was that the ordinances were going to be uh, taking into consideration. The different areas of the county and creating less stringent restrictions. Um, possibly on the, like the eastern part of Pennington County and the Black Hills. Um, and I think that this pretty much says we're going to, we're going to issue operating permits for septics. And they'll only be good for six years throughout all three regions. And it's my feeling and also my constituents' feelings. That that's, that's overbearing on ag land, um, areas that are underdeveloped and, and. Don't have groundwater nearby and that kinda stuff. So I think that we need to have something in here that makes an exception for that permit process. That, that there's certain areas of Pennington County that should be able to go longer without these inspections.
And if you look on page seven six, under our goals and policies, on goal PSF dash three. It says onsite we saw treatment systems in the county are well maintained and protect the county's resources. That we have those icons and those icons next from each identify the three areas. Um, and if you look at PSF three point four, it looks like the goal is to focus on like the hills area on that.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, I think Commissioner DeSanto, you made a very important point. That should be considered throughout this process, even when we're discussing PUDs. As many of these current concerns would be better uh, addressed within the revision of our ordinances. Um, excellent point. In fact, we have been currently working on the construction activity ordinance. And one of the things that has arisen is uh, some of the discussions that say for curb and gutter that we find in subdivision ordinance. That that mandatory requirement should be eliminated. And the board should be given within our ordinance discretion to require curb and gutter when appropriate for public health, welfare and safety. But certainly, we don't need curb and gutter out in the middle of Rapid Valley where it's, it's low density. So, a lot of these concerns, this is just a plan and overarching goal and plan. Many of these concerns are excellent and would be better addressed within our ordinances.
So approving this is not going to bind us on our ordinances in any way?
No, no, this is just the first piece. And then, and these are all, and we're gonna continue to make, and these are excellent because we'll make mental notes as we start working through our ordinances. In terms of we need to treat certain property owners differently under our ordinance than others.
Good, alright, thank you.
And Chair, Brittany on the wastewater. Now look at this like an appraisal report, I always try to fill my pages up. I find something that just gets the page is full. So with that being said, we still have a little more room on this page. Regarding the wastewater systems, could we maybe add the different options that someone would have such as the mound system? The standard uh, septic system and, and then the holding tank, those are the three that come to mind. Uh, we could just maybe let them, let the reader know that these would be the three options that you would normally find uh, throughout the county. And if there's another one that I missed, I guess there's some other ones coming down the pipeline that the.
The incinerator.
The incinerator, so it might just uh, somebody reads this, they know that they have some alternatives.
Okay.
Depending on where they live at and, and what the uh, characteristics of the land are.
Well, I can definitely work with staff and we can come back with a little like paragraph underneath here that kinda goes over what we're.
Just an idea.
The typical type of system that we see in the county, um, and things like that. So, and, and in certain areas we have ATU units because of sensitive areas, so we do have discretion in some of those, so.
Sure, so do we need a motion on that, Brittany? Or you're just gonna look into it and then if we need, when we do our next one, you can just bring back and say. Section seven, you guys didn't make a motion, but we listened to Ron and we just added it. Or, or do you think we need a motion?
Motion maker is okay with the addition of the language if the seconder is.
Yep.
And then we can bring the language to it, the meeting on the eighteenth, and then you can approve the language insertion in the language.
Thank you, Brit. Anything else? We do have a motion by LaCroy, second by Haddock with that addition, maybe with some extra language, anything else?
You know, one thing I've noticed, and I don't know if we, it's in here somewhere, but like Mark brought up. Uh, we got a couple thousand acres in the Black Hills of uh, Pesla land.
Mm-hmm.
And we wanna address that at all in this.
I think that's in the next section.
There you go.
We do address it.
I missed it.
Oh, let me see if it's in that section. I know that we um, had discussions about that property and it's actually given its own zoning designation. It will be the Paislaw zoning designation, so it, um, our members will have its distinct designation.
But I have a feeling that as time goes on that, that's gonna grow.
Sure, and then we can just continue to add that designation to it so to have its own.
For comprehensive plan.
Color on the map, so to speak, so.
You're gonna have a lot of different things change on this map by the time in the next five, ten years that they can keep updating land use. So we do have a motion, all, do we already say, all in favor say aye?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number eight, please, Ms. Brittany.
Eight is recreation, open space and tourism element. Uh, this goes over basically, um, what Ron had discussed earlier, um, the parks, the federal lands. We have a significant amount of federal lands in Pennington County. Um, we also have quite a bit of state lands in Pennington County. Um, those are all depicted on that map on eight five. Um, so obviously there's some different jurisdictional requirements or we don't have jurisdiction in those areas. Um, but they are shown, um, it goes over the tourism, the trails, the whole drug and sturgis, of course.
So Brittany, did they find any scenic byways that were federal on any of these land when they, when they were looking this up?
No, I think the only like designated byway is the Norbeck, I think is the only one that's actually.
Is it federal?
Designated, I believe so, but I think that's the only one that's truly designated.
And Norbeck is?
It's through Custer State Park.
Okay, so it's not in.
It, it goes through a portion of our county, but um, it goes through the mostly federal lands.
I just think that's, you know, as I mentioned earlier, that we need to identify the major streams and lakes.
In this element also.
Water bodies, what you have down, Brittany, and you have stream and river on there, Ron. Did you see that already on the map?
Yeah, but we don't have it like in the text too much, so.
Yeah, you don't, no streams, rivers or lakes.
So repeat kinda what you put in the first section.
It's kinda what makes the hills so special is the, the streams and the lakes.
Especially if you're a fly fisherman.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna add that to this, do we have a motion for this section with the adding, the addition again of some additional language under tourism on. Basically fishing, hiking, biking, kinda.
You know, I wonder if we should also be including. Um, you know, you go to Florida and Florida in all of their advertisements include their golf courses. And the Black Hills has, well, one of the top one hundred golf courses in the United States. Um, and it's got multiple beautiful golf courses that, that are top quality PGA certified courses.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if we should include those in our, where we're talking about our tourism.
Or recreation, open space and tourism overview. Community parks is, so what would it be under tourism as well?
Mm-hmm, tourism, probably. Mark might put that recreation eight one, maybe.
Yeah, cause it has community parks, federal lands, tourism, and then we don't really have recreation. We could add a recreation section and then add the lakes, river streams, trails, golf courses.
Because under eight point one, it says recreation, open space and tourism overview.
On community parks?
Well, it's not necessarily a community park because most of the golf courses are.
No like.
Hey.
Um, biking, hiking, or Brittany, you said put it under recreational?
Yeah, uh, like a, like after tourism, so if a tourism has its own heading, do recreation and then do lakes, river streams, you know, the fly fishing.
Courses.
And then golf courses, things like that.
Yeah, should, yeah, definitely.
Page two two might be another spot that we could expand on that, which should be uh, Black Hills focus area.
On, where are you at, Ron?
Uh, where they talk about future land uses and issues and opportunities.
You're on page.
Yeah, well, I'm just going back, but page two, two.
Two, two, okay.
Looks like.
They kinda coincide together then, looks like Brittany, unless you find something different.
Okay.
On, from where we changed it at hiking, biking at the front to now here.
Have wine, go golfing.
We'll get some language together.
We need to keep in mind as to who may be looking at these documents. And uh, and I suspect all this will be online. Uh, so from economic development standpoint, I would expect that anybody that's interested in coming to the area, maybe looking at it online. Uh, so that information uh, would be uh, probably an enhancement for them to see that. Maybe it's not located exactly in Pennington County, but uh, we're considering all of the Black Hills. So, um, I think that probably is a, appropriate to include in it.
Any additions besides this and number eight?
Nope.
You have a motion?
Move to approve section eight with the changes recommended.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Jews, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number nine is the health and safety element. It goes over the health, health and safety of the community. Uh, discusses flood hazards, wildfires and our existing fire service in our um, community. Um, search and rescue, emergency management, um, hazardous materials and solid waste disposal, military compatibility. And then it goes over the goals and policies under that section.
So Brittany, I would expect that this is not gonna be finally adopted until early into two thousand twenty. Uh, that uh, and I, I think Rapid City Regional, it's a name change, is supposedly taking place like in January.
Okay.
Uh, so I would suggest that we update, make all the changes in here wherever it refers to Rapid City Regional Hospital.
Monument?
As monument.
Okay.
Good point. Give you a minute to look at section nine. Planning Commission did, uh, with your staff, amazing job. They spent hours and days on this.
Discussing line by line.
Yep.
Yeah, this is all the changes that they.
Yep, the book.
They did some work.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very disappointed that what Mark found on that, or it should have been uh, feed instead of grain. That Kathy Johnson didn't find that.
Maybe she wasn't designated that page.
And it could have been should or shall, it could, it didn't have to be for sure.
Right.
Or what was the word they used at the end?
Shall.
Shall? He should feed, use it as feed, but they shall if Mark tells them to do it.
As long as, what section we all know?
Nine.
Run nine.
The only, the only thing I could see on this is when they talk about the military capabilities, we're gonna get the new bombers out.
That's what I was just gonna bring up.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, that's, that is probably the only change uh, we could add in there, because that's, we're gonna be the first one.
Um, also, under, in addition to emergency management department in Pennington County, there are emergency services that are provided by other entities and Ellsworth is not included. And they provide one of our top um, hazardous waste disposal units.
They do, good point, yep.
And is that on the top of page nine eight?
Nine eight, yes ma'am.
Uh, no, actually it's on nine seven.
Nine seven?
Um, the last section of nine seven.
And then it carries, read, read the next page two, um, it could probably carry into that hazardous materials, solid waste disposal. Cause they also, um, that's who you would call, yeah.
Okay.
And we have the landfill as well.
And there's another, Deb, you were in it, weren't you at the meeting two weeks ago? When they mentioned the, oh no, you didn't make it.
Nope, it was a Wednesday.
You should talk to Dustin, because there's another facility that is also purchasing a hazmat trailer. Which includes hazmat cleanup, and I can't remember what entity it is.
You know, Ellsworth has one.
Might be Rapid Fire.
Is it, I know, um, National Guard has hazmat capabilities as well.
They do too, but they're mentioned in here.
Yeah, but it's not that other one, that's not the second one you're talking about?
I think it was, uh, he was sitting to the right of me, um, let me picture his face and I'll know who he is. I think it's. Rapid Fire, Rapid City Fire is also producing, purchasing a hazmat trailer.
I'll confirm with Dustin on that section for that.
Who, are they the ones, Mark, that got that little, remember they had a bigger trailer and then they made it into a smaller trailer because it was more compatible? Is that Rapid Fire, Rapid City Fire, that's what you're talking about?
I think so, yeah, but they're getting another new.
Yeah, cause the big one was too much to try to take all that stuff with them. When they had the train wreck, the big one was, so you're right, it was, it was Rapid City Fire. No, I went to the meeting the week before. Mark.
Oh, you did?
When they didn't have one and thought it was.
And then the other thing that maybe should be mentioned in here. in addition to emergency management department of Pennington County would be our, uh, Sheriff's Search and Rescue.
Does that go under hazardous materials, solid waste?
I read that somewhere.
Oh, it's search and rescue at the top.
Oh, it's at the top on nine seven.
Okay.
Madam Chair, when we get a minute, I'd like to go back to section three just for a second.
Kate, let's finish this one, get a motion and we'll go back to section three, Commissioner.
All right, we're good.
Any other, um, changes on section nine, Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion?
We didn't make any changes, did we?
Um, just.
B twenty-one?
Additions.
Oh, yeah, B twenty-one, okay, I would make a motion that we, uh, uh, adopt, uh, nine with the suggested change.
Motion by Drews?
Second.
Second by LaCroy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, section three, Commissioner Ross.
Before we go back to three, I haven't read this word by word, but have we addressed the solar panel farms and the, and the wind, uh, fields?
I think.
I think we did in here. Think it was under.
Seems to me there's something kind of happening out by New Underwood. I just, uh, wondered if we have something on our comprehensive plan.
I remember the discussion through Planning Commission, but I don't remember which section.
We'll, we'll look that up, um, let's go back to section three, Ron.
Uh, section three, we have egg, which is going to be ten acres and that's unchanged, or.
What page, John, Ron?
Uh, three, three.
Thank you, sir. Three, three, and you're looking at what change?
So I'm just going through these egg would be ten acres and we get into higher density with branch app residential, that'll be a new one at five.
Correct.
And then rural residential would be three.
Correct.
Which is currently low density.
Yes, correct.
And then, well, I went to a, a planning, uh, session a few weeks ago at Rapid City and Vicky Fisher did a presentation on the tiny homes. And I, I, sooner or later, I think that's gonna pop up, so I wonder if we want to add that now, even if we don't have a lot of information on it, but.
We call those park models.
Anyhow, it's gonna be a new, uh, zoning designation in Rapid City, so I thought maybe we want to try to uh, look at that a little bit.
Um, and we in our office have had a lot of requests for them, um, either just being on a single lot, having multiples of them on a lot. Um, so yes, that is something that we are aware of, that we need to address, um, in addition. I know that the city did their ordinance, um, they're doing, aren't they doing them more as a, like a accessory unit?
Well, the tiny home, the way they're setting it up is that they gotta be on a platted lot. And they, uh, they got the tiny home and then the garden home, the tiny home can be as small as a hundred and fifty square feet and up to six hundred square feet, and then you go to the garden, which is six hundred and one square feet to eleven hundred square feet. And each one can have one parking space and one auxiliary building no lot, or no larger than ten by ten. And how you determine the lot size is you take the square footage of the footprint and divide that by thirty percent. So you can have smaller lots. But each one would have a legally platted lot and they normally would do those in a clump, you know, ten or twelve, like in a cul-de-sac with a common part. And if that's not on the radar, that's fine, but I just figured if the city's doing it, if we had to at least, uh, address that. But that's.
Um, I think that would be more appropriate when we go into our zoning ordinance under certain zoning designations. The struggle for us is going to be on those smaller lots, um, is having septic also and a well, um, so that's, I mean, in Rapid Valley, that may work where they have water and sewer. Um, but when you get up into the hills, um, I think that's possible and I think there's a demand for it, certainly, it's just having a place for the well and the septic.
Well, that'd be your planned unit development. But it's gonna be like a mobile home park in a way, but each lot's gonna be planted and they probably have one system in there that would would take care of a s- a group of seven or ten units and then one well that would, so they would have to provide a central uh, sewage system and a central water system. But I think you're gonna find, there's gonna be a demand for that probably sooner than later.
I think that there already is, um, we struggle right now just with that twenty by twenty requirement because anyone has to get a conditional use permit. As you know, for a single wide mobile home or anything that doesn't meet that footprint and it falls kind of in that category, um, so.
That's kind of the bottom line, you can do that land designation, I mean, meaning land use, then that would be more of a conditional use, I think, more than a PUD. Unless you wanted, because of septic and everything else, you're gonna have to have the land use accordingly, but you're also gonna have kind of like vacation home rentals, there's gonna have to be some certain rules and regs. Not through PUD, I don't think, but I think through CUP in that, in that case.
I mean, I think you could just have them allowed in certain designations and if you want multiples of them on one.
Right.
Then it would go to a CUP or, you know, where, how we have separate sections in our zoning ordinance that are mobile home parks. You know, maybe we can address them as a separate section and they're allowed in certain zoning districts, almost like we do like a VHR or a guest house.
Ron's PUD land.
What's the, what's the smallest home that a person can build on a lot in the county?
Twenty by twenty without a conditional use permit.
Hundred and forty-four square feet, but you're saying, Ron, that what they're doing is
They have to get a conditional use for it.
If they're gonna build a hundred and twenty foot small home, they only need a hundred and thirty-three square feet of property?
If they divide that by thirty percent, that's got to be the lot size.
Wow.
I think, I think Jim Skell on this one that we're gonna go to later today, he's, um, I met with Hanny Shaffy a few days ago and Hanny's doing one out by Rapid Valley and it's gonna be a hundred, hundred units. Of course, they'll have.
Tiny homes?
Tiny homes.
Isn't that behind Menards?
I'm not sure what the development is, but, you know, they'll have central water and sewer, but I'm just seeing that they're just seeing people, single people, they don't need a, a large place. I don't know where they got the hundred and fifty square feet, that seems pretty small.
Madam Chair, I, I think that we may make a generic comment in here relative to them. Uh, but the real governing body of that is going to be the future ordinance that's can be considered and adopted at a later point in time.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things for consideration and Brittany has hit on several of those. Uh, it's okay if you're around a, um, current development, you may be able, may be able to make it work there very well. But if you're talking about out in the hills, how do you make sure that the, you're taking care of the, the sewage, et cetera, water issues? Um, it, it's all gonna depend on the area, what kind of soil conditions they have, how many units they want to put in and so forth, so. Uh, there's a lot of things that are gonna have to go into that ordinance, I think, that, to protect.
Yeah.
Well, we can just go, they have park models up there in the same area, I'm just saying that you can kind of use that for example, in a sense, because they have water and sewer, don't they? Right, on all those park models that we had when we went and visited, Brittany, so we can use some of that as a guide. Um, how that's been working, how big it should be, that kind of thing, based on cities ordinance, but like we said, the county's gonna be a little bit different. They have water and sewer hookups, that's gonna be a whole different rule then.
I mean, what we see or what we've been asked in our office is more, I mean, there's the person that wants an acre or two and just wants a little tiny house, just wants their little piece out. You know, not necessarily in town, they just, they don't want a big house, they don't want, you know, a whole lot. Either that or it's just a vacation or somewhere where they go, they just don't want a lot of maintenance, they spend a lot of time traveling, things like that, so that, that's what we're seeing is they kind of want, so to speak, their little piece of heaven. They just don't want like a huge structure there.
I, I think that there, it's gotta be, gotta be some uniformity because you can't sit there and say, I'm gonna build one here and then have two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes on each side. I think you have to pick a designated area and say where you're not encroaching on somebody else's property rights.
We're gonna stick them all out, blue wing.
And that's why they have to be, to me, they gotta be in a clump to work, not just maybe one by itself, but a six or seven on one well and, and sewer system. But in an area where they, where it doesn't clash with the neighboring zoning, just something that.
Actually, it's a.
I, I agree, I wouldn't want to build a two hundred square foot house next to a you know, a five hundred thousand dollar house, that's.
There's a couple of them like that off of Deerfield Road.
You know what?
This ten thousand square foot cabin right next door to it is a one bedroom cabin built in eighteen eighteen, you know?
Gary brought up a good point, how about Tent City? Those are little tiny homes, are those like little?
Sort of have one of those.
Yeah, that Hill City. So how did we, I remember we approved it, so.
It's a campground.
So they just using them as little cabins, kind of. We have some examples, but I say if we want tiny homes, we should try them in.
So the water, water and sewer was all approved for that.
They have several large septic systems and a well system.
At a park model city, you could have like Blue Wing Tiny Home City. Don't you have some little tiny homes up there?
Yeah.
Like, are they park models, basically?
They're park models, they're four hundred square feet.
What's the difference between a tiny home and a park model then?
Uh, you could categorize those as a tiny home.
Weight.
Weight?
Weight.
Are they built? Or not?
They what?
I guess I don't, I haven't seen the difference.
I think a tiny home, according to the Rapid City's preliminary planning, would be anything smaller than six hundred square feet.
Oh, basically you don't have a mobile home, you have a tiny home.
So whether it's thick built or modular, I don't think it makes any difference. It's a tiny home.
Can they use a, so, okay, so we're gonna have a problem with people using RV homes as tiny homes and different stuff like that, like we did with the park model? Cause it's under a certain amount of feet?
Probably. Well, you'd have to categorize a, an RV as self-contained, whereas a tiny home would have to be on a external well and that, that, to me, that would be the primary difference.
Couldn't you hook up a RV the same way and call it a tiny, tiny home?
And if it's got an axle and
Hitch.
You know, we're gonna be pissed to death.
That's why, without being weird about that, I just, I guess I was just thinking how you could get away with some of the stuff that if you don't define that very well, but, okay, we're off subject.
Where are we at, where are we at, ten?
We're on ten.
Can we take a five minute break before we start?
Sure.
Sure.
Second?
All in favor, Seth?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We only have two sections left. Just took a break is all. We are on number ten, thank you, John.
All right.
Thank you, Brit, go ahead.
All right, uh, number ten is cult, or natural and cultural resource element, a natural and cultural resource overview. Um, this, uh, deals a lot with our, um, mining industry, um, there's a lot of questions in this, the geology, um, the history of Pennington County and our aquifers.
So we do have a speaker request. Your name, sir?
Uh, Mike Gollinger, uh, two nine one five Sour Dough Road, Rapid City.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I guess all my request is that, uh, you consider rewriting the goal for NCR dash five. It says the, uh, according to best practices, or, you know, mining operations in Pennington County will be reclaimed following excavation according.
Hold on just a second, Mike, um, what page, ten, four or?
Ten, five, yep.
Ten, five, sir, and it's NCR?
Dash five.
Dash five, thank you, sir. First paragraph?
Yes, correct, uh, mining operations in Pennington County will be reclaimed following excavation according to best practices designed to restore the site to the pre-mining land use. And I guess I just ask that, or ask that you consider changing that, uh, pre-mining land use to an approved final use. You know, cause sometimes, uh, you know, the final use might not be what, what it originally was, maybe you want to reclaim to something else, so I guess that. And that would more closely line up with, uh, with ordinance three twenty-two and some of the reclamation goals that they're looking for in that, so if you would consider that.
So Brittany, on final use, approved final use, is that what the wording should be after reclamation, is it final use, isn't there a different?
Um, I think what they were looking at is what the pre-mining land use, a lot of times they go back to agriculture or timber or something like that, um, but some of the areas are closer to town, so they may be developed in their future land uses more industrial or commercial. So that's what they're looking, um, for, because we had talked about that in section three twenty, that they're not always gonna, they might have been agricultural use starting. But because of development and things and future land use, it could go into industrial, commercial and those other types of use.
So maybe approved final future land use.
Or, uh, correct.
Is that, that's basically your final land use designation or something?
Or a future or a current land use designation, because if it's a current land use designation is agriculture and they put it back to agriculture, that's fine.
But he's, but he's saying right now it's mining and once it's reclaimed, then what would you?
Well, essentially what, right now, the way it would stand, as I understand it, it would go back to what its original use was, original.
Previous to mining.
Correct.
Correct.
And, and I, and the suggestion is, is that you might want to use that land for some other purpose after it's been reclaimed.
Right.
And so not necessarily should it need to be reclaimed back to what its original site looked like.
Right.
But reclaim back to whatever the potential use is for that.
Or some pre-approved plan or something like that, you know, you might, you might reclaim a, a sand and gravel pit to the lakes within, with high-end homes around them, you know?
Right.
There's, there's a lot of opportunities, there's a lot of things for that, that you could, you know, end up with a higher end use than what it really was in the beginning.
So maybe just approve, uh, final future land use.
Or an approved land use, um, because under section three twenty, you guys will approve the reclamation plan and if, as part of that reclamation plan, uh, their, their plan, they could always come back and change it in front of the board and say that, you know, you could have a developer, like you said, that wants to build high-end homes around a, a man-made lake. And that's totally possible, even though the previous land use was agriculture or for, park forest, if it was in the city or something like that.
And the appraisal industry would, we would say, um, land use that would be physically possible, legally permissible, financially and most productive. I mean, that's, and it was reclaimed, but that's how people determine what the land use is gonna be.
And we would probably look at it what the future land use designation would be as part of our comprehensive plan.
Right.
Or whatever was approved in the reclamation plan.
That would fall under the legally permissible.
Okay, well, we can put what Ron said, it sounds very professional as well, so, for what's gonna happen at the end. It has all three areas that you would cover, does that make sense?
Could you say that one more time?
It's gotta be legally permissible, because if it's not legally, you can't, can't go down another three, it's gotta be physically possible. It's gotta be financially feasible and the max, maximum, maximum productive.
Sounds pretty good.
Okay, did you get all those, Brittany?
I only think that the financially feasible part is vague.
Is what?
Vague.
Oh, that's vague, that's, that's an appraisal process. And the federal government actually is the one that making us do that.
Is that right? Wow. I mean, financially feasible in my, my mind is completely different than financially feasible in somebody like Deb's mind, for crying out loud.
Deb, Gary.
It's just a suggestion.
Lloyd. Okay, okay.
Um, sir, so anything else in section ten that you needed to look at?
No, thank you.
Appreciate you bringing that to us, Mike, yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And I think that email from Brian Tiedemann, uh, that Holly put on yours was similar to that.
Yep.
Yeah, Mike and Brian were actually working together, if I'm correct, Mike? Yes, sir, okay. Anything else? Board, if not, motion, more discussion?
I, I would, oh, I does everybody have a chance to look at ten?
Well, we can make a motion and then do changes accordingly, it's, it's not like, we're not gonna vote on it, does that make sense? We're just going to stay with.
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve ten, uh, with the understanding that Brittany will work on the language, uh, relative to that reclamation.
Second for possible discussion.
Okay, so a motion and a second for discussion.
I get one question.
Okay, go ahead, Ron.
On ten, two, says the geology of Pennington County also provides valuable natural resources. The county contains one hundred and eighty-nine mining sites. One oh five are currently active. What are the ones that aren't active?
Those were, so I know where they got this, the state has a, um, aggregate mine database and there's ones that were probably previously mined and there's areas that have been reclaimed. Um, they may be adjacent to current land sites. I know that, um, like Pennington County Highway has had several, I'm just using that as an example, they've had several mine sites on different properties throughout the eastern Pennington County, depending upon roads and needs and agreements with landowners, so those might not, they. and agreements with landowners. So those might not, they might have been an active mine site at one time, but they're not active now. So they'd still be listed as a mine site in the county.
But these are all kinds of mine sites.
All, that sand and gravel mine sites, there are mine sites that have been active since the, um, D E N R has been keeping record essentially in the early eighties.
Not mineral ones? Just aggregate?
Not mineral.
But there are a number of mining claims and some of those mining claims, and they're active. And they can, and they can be, they can be worked, but a lot of those are on federal property. And I've had people come up to me and we know that we got a mining ordinance coming out and they just wanna make sure that the small, like, uh, I just, I got one that I'm working on now. It's a small scale. It's Jimmy Dean and he, and he basically, he uses it for decorative rock. And he, I don't think he should be held accountable to the standards that the larger mines are. I mean, there should be a differen- a differentiating. So we address the small opposes, that, uh, one size don't necessarily fit all.
Yeah, and that's something that we talked to Jim about in our office. So when we, when three twenty comes in front of you guys, that is something you guys can consider under the fee section and maybe like a size amount or an acreage amount. Um, I know that Lawrence County designates, they don't, um, they have aggregate and mineral kind of in one.
And it, and it could fall under the small and large construction permit. To Brittany, there might be something in there that you might be able to work out if they're just pulling rock, big rock out for decoration. It might not be under grant unless he's selling it or, you know what I mean? It becomes a business.
He is, but when you look at what his, his sites are usually one to five acres.
At Jim's, but not.
Right. But other, there's, most of the other large aggregate sites are, you know, twenty, thirty acres, you know, things like that. So his, he, he is definitely, uh, in, in a, he, he has a different, um, situation, I guess, is a better.
When we get into the mining ordinance, do we have any jurisdiction on what happens on federal property?
Um, the agreements that I have seen, um, of gems and then actually county highway has one up on Six Mile Road. They basically designate how much of the property and how they have to reclaim it, um, the bonds that are required and all of that. And you typically in their agreement, they have to meet our requirements. So, um, like they require Jim to get a mining permit from the local jurisdiction. Um, sometimes the state requires that. That's not always the case on all of the federal lands. It's only in the ones where in their agreement, they specifically state that they have to get a mine permit from the local jurisdiction.
So when you do a mining permit, what she's saying is that we have a county standard and a permit, but then there's also state standards that we had to put, um, that there's federal, state and county requirements. And then we also put the resource areas in order to figure out if you're, um, using federal, state or just county ordinance. That way, if you had to go through there and look through that book and go, you know, what do I need to do to, you know, get a mining permit to the state or the feds? We actually put that as a reference piece in there, if I'm correct, Brittany, just to help people through a mining process in any sense, not just the counties.
So pretty much if they've, just a question, they duplicate, are they kind of duplicated the state and federal? Our permit may, is pretty much, if you've gotten those, it's duplicate, you're gonna find in one of those or?
No, not necessarily.
Mike, Mike could, Mike, you wanna answer some of this? Um, you're gonna know more than me and why, but, um, why they would know they were federal or state and what those rules and regs are. They're a lot more entailed in one sense, if I'm correct, with how many.
You know, it kinda depends on where you are and if it's a mining claim or if it's federal property or like that, but then you're gonna fall under, if it's a federal, you'll fall under that, that NEPA Act, the National Environmental Protection Act. You have to go through that whole set of things, but at the same time, you will have county and state regulations that you'll have to follow as well.
Yep.
Our county regu- our county regulations would supersede if they were more stringent than the federal regulations, you would have to adhere to the county regulations. Is that correct?
Um, and the NEPA, prob- ours probably are not.
As I, as I recall from Danielle, you have to get a state license. You got, and if you're in the state, like you guys have to get a state license and there's huge things in there. Then after they're done with their state license, which we have duplicated some of it, um, then you'd get a county license. We don't supersede. They have to do the, the state first. That's why I said, when people said, well, I gotta do as a county, you guys are, this needs to be more stringent. I tell people, um, when we're in our committee, I had no idea there was books and books of stuff for them to comply through NEPA and other rules and regulations even before they get to us. That when you get to us, um, we do it more locally, like the water systems and a little bit, we're duplicating in a sense, but we're also saying we like some setbacks from this and things like that, that, um, we made a little bit more stringent for our people, so.
Yeah.
Um, they aren't just doing a county mining ordinance. They already had to go through permits before they even got to us.
Right, correct.
I know that studies that I've done in Michigan and Wisconsin on, they, they define, uh, there's two, and one would be precious metal and one would be sand and gravel, which to me are just totally different.
And our state does also. We have minerals and then aggregate essentially.
Then when you look at the federal land out there, the Forest Service, they have the surface rights in the Black Hills National Forest, but they don't have the mineral rights.
Right, that's BLM.
That's another segment of the federal government.
Yep.
And I, I think the extraction of the mineral, uh, mining is probably the most, um, talked about and the most um, controversial. Because of the, the chemicals and the things they use in order to extract that, that's in, uh, oil mining as well, where people think is just saltwater. They use some pretty stringent chemicals in there, so that's, I think that's where they start getting federal areas is when they're extracting through a lot, well.
Well, then you go through that environmental analysis, that whole EA step or the EIS step as well.
And cultural resources.
Oh, yeah.
Cultural resources and other.
They go through a lot different because, um, minerals, a lot different mining than you already know just by extraction. You know, and how deep, if I'm correct.
Uh, I don't know if that necessarily, the deepness itself would come into play, but more so the, the minerals that are, the minerals in the processing would be, would, would trigger it.
That's true. For the kids. Question, sorry. I count you guys kids. Any other? If not, we do have a motion on number ten. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven.
Eleven. This is the last section. The implementation program. The implementation, um, of the comprehensive plan is broken up into four categories. The short term, which is about one to three years after adoption, midterm, four to seven years after adoption and long term. Starts eight or more after adoption and then the ongoing, um, items that we'll just continue to work on, you know, through the process. So, um, there's quite a few action numbers in here. Um, these are actions that, um, the comprehensive plan, uh, anticipates that um, we'll take, you know, in the next.
So you mean, we would adopt it, but it wouldn't be, um, utilized or changed fully?
Um, well, like if you look at.
Or midterm?
So the, this plan will be like our basis and, and your basis for when we get requests, like for development requests. So like the first action numbers, the county should amend the zoning ordinance to be consisted with the residential density set forth in the comprehensive plan, and that's an immediate short-term action. So with this comprehensive plan, that's what they're saying is, with the changes in the comprehensive plans, with the goals in this comprehensive plan that are different, you know, our community's different than it was in two thousand and two. Um, the needs are different than it was, that we start implementing some of these action items.
So can, can I ask you something, Brittany? So are you guys gonna have like a, a, what do you call it? Computer system thing where when changes are made, you can update the comprehensive plan? When you change it to monument, when you change things in this comprehensive plan to keep it updated? Do we have a computer software thing or something that can do that accordingly? Why we're making the changes through the one to ten, twenty years, instead of have some document that's not keeping up, you see what I'm saying? Cause you're gonna paper it instead of.
I get where you're going, Deb, but I think any changes would have to come back through the commission. I mean, you can just go back.
No, that's what I mean.
But, yeah, but the easiness of it, of being, I think it is on a computer where if we, if something comes up and we need to make changes, they could go back and.
And make those changes.
So, you see what I'm saying, Brittany? That, that way, your staff might, three years, your staff might be two or three gone and then we have this that they're trying to follow, let alone commissioners in two to three years or four years, whatever, could change and then we have this plan and we're going, what?
In theory, in most of these types of plans, they should be reviewed by staff, um, at least every, like on a, every year or two years.
Basis or something.
And, and kinda look at the trends and the changes in development and see what kind of requests are coming through our office. If we're granting zoning ordinances all the time, if we're, are variances all the time, if we're have CUPs all over the place for these same types of uses, um, like a single wide mobile home. Where you, we always have that same request over and over. To us, that would say something needs to change. So those would be key, like triggers to where, you know, staff would have to bring it forward to the commission and say, you know, hey, we're seeing this. You guys are granting all these variances, all of these things. Um, Michelle brought up the same one about curb and gutter in suburban residential. I don't know, anywhere in the county, except for Rapid Valley, which is planted through the city where I, since I've been here, a commission has ever required curb and gutter. You know, so those things just don't work, so to say. So, um, as staff goes through that and starts to see those trends, I think that's an important trigger point for us to bring to the commission and say, hey, this isn't working for, you know, the citizens anymore. What can we do to update our comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance? And to make those changes so it's more user-friendly or, or property-friendly.
And, and that's what your staff is doing now is based on those, all the CUPs and the designations and the things that just keep happening over and over again. This plan has reflected that just from the things that have been so repetitive and overused that we can make it simplified for our staff and for our, uh, constituents.
And then, uh, updating our zoning ordinance will reflect those, cause that'll actually be the, like, the law or the ordinance that's going to reflect those changes, you know? So certain uses might be allowed in other districts that might not have been, but people are asking for them all the time and we have multiple CUPs, so maybe that's inappropriate if we never get complaints about them, they're, you know, things like that. So that, you know, or land is being used in a different way and they're rezoning these or they're getting lot size variances all the time. So tho- those are the type of things that, you know, by reviewing this, um, if we have a, a yearly basis, we put it on our calendar. We do it as a, as a staff, go through our changes, present them to the board or the planning commission and the board and then go from there.
It'd be nice to see through those PUDs, how many PUDs we have in the county. And how many CUPs we have and where we find that solution between a CUP and a PUD. Um, as you see, cause like I said, those PUDs have been used for a reason and same with the CUP and is there, what's the solution of not having a bunch of CUPs for everything? And going through a huge process and how we can may, maybe we'll have to ordinance, maybe we have to land use it different or PUD, cause some of it might be designed, like you said, single wide mobile homes kinda, or tiny houses. We might be classifying in a, a different land designation as well, unless they already have that in here with a half acre or whatever, but, um, it, it'd be nice to see how many, um, CUPs and PUDs we had. I think that would help with the decision in the end.
I'm sure.
Questioner.
My, my only comment on item eleven is I really appreciate that you got narrowed down to, uh, timeframes and what should happen. I mean, short terms, one to three years, midterms, four to seven. I mean, you, you gotta plan so you can go back and look at these and whoever does can kinda look back and say, implementation, we're at three, is it not done yet? We're not working on it? What's going on? Somebody can, can bring them back and, and there's some accountability, I think, in it, so I appreciate that.
And, um, if you do look at action item number two, it says the county should consider including alternative homes such as tiny homes in the zoning ordinance.
Where's that?
Number two.
Number two.
That I'm sure.
So.
There you go.
Couple of questions, Brittany. Uh, first of all, on that same page, eleven, two, number five, uh, talks about the current version of international building code.
Mm-hmm.
What's been the practice in the county for adoption of building codes? They do it every five years or is it?
We have none.
No, oh, we have no building code.
No, the only, um, the only thing that the county does inspections on is on site waste water treatment systems. That's the only thing where they permit, they submit a pla- a design plan and we actually have a staff member that goes out, does the inspection, verifies it and signs off on it.
Okay. So if we had a, a, a building zoning code, uh, would that pretty much require us to have a building inspector then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next question for you is, goes to, uh, page eleven dash four, uh, number twenty-three. Where it talks about, uh, county should work with Ellsworth Air Force Base and the development and dissemination of public awareness and educational material on vibrations caused by air flight operations. Is the vibrations, I mean, I, I presume that's from takeoff and so forth. Is that the only concern? I mean, do we wanna be that specific?
Well, currently we have what we call like an ACUS area, so there's certain types of buildings that aren't allowed in those areas because of them. Um, so, you know, there's, there's things that are grandfathered in that are out there, but typically a mobile home in certain zones and that are not allowed.
Wind and energy, um, meaning solar, um, we had to have an expert from Ellsworth come in to make sure that any of those towers or anything that we were approving were in that ACUS area are not affecting them.
Sure.
So the vibration was the biggest issue and then the height.
Right, and there's other issues. They don't like to have even around the airport or Ellsworth, any kind of large ponds, anything like that, cause of water foul there. I mean, so there's different things that they don't like to see in those areas besides just vibrations that all kinda comes in. There is some like flight path zones and some different things that we, we do give out, um, a form now and if people are building structures in an area, in those areas now, they have to fill out an FAA form and send it into the FAA to say that they know that they're in this zone. They're aware of, you know, potential hazards of being in these zones, so.
Then on, uh, eleven dash five, uh, number thirty, I'm wondering if this is, may include what Ron is talking about on the renewable energy that says the county should develop and enact a zoning ordinance amendment to incorporate military compatibility guidelines for renewable energy development.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Uh, right, but do we wanna be specific to Ellsworth or do we wanna be? I mean.
Something that covers the entire county?
Entire county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we broaden that to do that?
Mm-hmm. It, it says the county should.
Should develop, but then, but then it's, it talks about incorporate military compatibility guidelines for renewable energy development.
Right.
Doesn't talk about other areas.
Like industry guidelines?
In order, in other words, using military guidelines to restrict or authorize, um, that's the guidelines that we would use to allow for that development.
Right. So the county should develop an act of zoning ordinance amendment to incorporate military compatibility guidelines for renewable energy development.
Basically, we're op- we're, we're adopt, we're adopting military guidelines.
Okay, I see, I see what it's saying now.
So it's not, we're, we're taking what we just talked about as well, whether it's from, um, what's, whoops, um, what's it called?
Federal.
No, right in the middle of town. Can't wrap it, thank you, Holly, sorry. As well, so, some of that, uh, starts affecting into the county areas, their flight zones and different stuff as well. So, um, basically the ACUS stuff that we learned, me and Brittany and all of us learned when we were doing alternative en- energy, we, we didn't know half of that stuff. In fact, uh, we learned a lot, so. It's, it's huge.
Okay, I understand.
The areas like in Radar Hill and all those areas, that started being a huge effect on what was happening in that area.
And then looking at thirty-three on the last page, eleven dash six. Uh, that's where it talks about the financial assur- assurance, but is that where that language could be modified to what, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect suggested?
No.
What number?
Number thirty-three.
I think that's primarily addressing mining.
Hmm. Mining or any kind of heavy industrial, those would be the two where you'd be impacted, maybe some light industrial.
She could reword it with all Ron's saying in there.
In other words, we need to make sure that they have charity bonds.
Charity, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Sufficient.
Right.
And we did that for three twenty, we did ensure that.
Something the state does not necessarily have in place.
They do, but, um, not very big. About twenty or twenty-five, isn't it, Mike? Yeah.
That's why I'm saying sufficient.
That's why we were laughing.
Adam, Adam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Brittany, number three, where it addresses, uh, they encourage the development of housing that is affordable. What are we, I, I'm still, you know, I, I see affordable so much, but I'm trying to figure out what affordable really is. How do we, how do we define that, just a little bit more?
Ron's, Ron's Hill City, um, Development Corporation.
I mean, we don't wanna confuse.
Sure.
Low income and affordable, they're both totally different. Uh, I just wondered how, how we would implement that.
You know, one of my, and I, types of things is like a single wide mobile home requiring a CUP for it, those kinds of things. You know, um, a lot of the, um, those kinds of are a little more affordable. Um, and we see those, we see governor's houses, um, a lot of those. Um, unfortunately, property in Pennington County is not affordable. I mean, in most of the areas in the hills, it just, it just isn't, so.
Affordable, you know, Jim, Jim Skell defined affordable in, in his development as one seventy-five to two twenty-five. And that kind of boggles my mind, that's affordable, but that's what it is in the Hill City market.
The, really, the reason, the way you figure out affordable housing according to federal standards is. You take the median income of the area, and I think it's forty-two point five percent of me, of medium income. Is what they're, what they can afford as far as housing is concerned.
Yeah.
So that, you know.
Do they, do they have standards of low income and.
Yeah.
And affordable housing?
Uh, they, as, as.
No, I meant.
They have that federal standard, and that's what they're supposed to go by for subsidies and so forth. Affordable gets thrown around a lot, and then, so that's where people are getting confused. It's Ron just said, one thirty-five, or one seventy-five. If you look at the, at the lower income, what, what they're talking about for affordability, they can only afford fifty thousand dollars, well.
I'm just saying, how do you do a zoning ordinance according to affordable or, so. I guess I don't get that, or low income. I mean, we can do, um, like, we wanted to adopt. The standard through the state, through the county, in order to help them to do that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Remember, the state rules that, um, Lust and those guys brought up, that, the. Taking off some of the taxes or anything, but not through a zoning ordinance.
Um, I think on this one, why, uh, cause it says the accessory drilling units to encourage the development of housing that is affordable. I think what they mean by that is that there's an existing structure there. Now, you have to go through a process. You either have to. Get a guest house, or a caretaker's residence, or be a ranch hand. Otherwise, you don't qualify for. What this is saying is that we're going to allow a mother-in-law suite, or, or something like that by right. It's a use by right. In certain zoning districts, so then that way, you know, now more and more people are, you know. Trying to take care of their, their family members and things, and now they have to go through a whole process. And they have to remove that structure when that need isn't there. I think this is saying that we're just gonna allow that kind of housing.
I think it's multi-purpose with the accessory buildings, because now, you're, from my understanding, you're seeing a lot of, uh. Parents and kids buying houses together, so it's affordable. And so, I think, put another res- like you were saying, another residence and so forth.
So then we go back to PUD and CUP. I'm gonna guess, you know what I'm saying? If we're talking about affordable or, um.
Accessories.
Or accessory or low income.
Yeah.
Um, last thing I got would be, there again, I think it'd really be beneficial, probably Rodney Brown with the Forest Service too. See if he would just glance through this, because Rodney, he, he gets routed through all this stuff.
Sure.
And, uh, I'd just be curious to see if they have any comments.
Okay.
The ends were surrounded by national forests for the most part when you start going west.
Um, on number twenty-nine, MIA, the military influence area. On the comprehensive zoning map. So that means the fly zones and stuff? Is that what it's called, is the military influence area? Cause usually MIA is.
Apparently, we, we look at them, the new, we call them the. Type studies, and there's different, like.
I have vets and every other day they're MIA, so, um, I just didn't know if we were putting military, maybe that's kind of picky with. MIA for military influence areas, did I? Bring them to MIA on the comprehensive plan and zoning map? Maybe that's weird, but just saying, I've never heard of a military influence area.
Hi.
Maybe picky, but I think that's just a weird word.
So what are you saying? You want MIA in parentheses removed and just leave the long name?
Well, it might be offensive to, uh, frigging.
I think we check with them. I, I suspect that's what they actually call them.
Yeah.
The military.
Brittany, black on eleven, two, number five, um, adopting the international building code. One question, and it is applicable to the other question I asked. It'll be dependent on the area. That, that you live in the county, correct?
That's my understanding.
City will be more stringent than, or somewhere around the city will be more stringent than out in the woods. Um, and then second is, knowing how many building permits are applied for every month. I don't think one inspector is going to be sufficient. Would I be correct?
Correct.
Probably two or three?
And I think that there was discussion earlier, just slowly looking at. Like main things, not everything. Cause in the city, you know, a typical single-family residence, you can have eighteen to twenty-two inspections. Just for one single-family residence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, maybe, uh, you know, cause looking at like where you guys are giving variances for, what do you guys usually give variances for setbacks? Cause people put things in the wrong place, or they don't know the easements are there. So things like that, looking at maybe location type. Um, things first, you know, so I, you know, that's obviously up for discussion, but.
But we won't get as in-depth as electrical inspections.
Those are state.
We might get, we might do, uh, um, plumbing inspections.
State doesn't.
As far as from the house out, but not within side the house. Am I correct?
We just look at, basically like for the septic, we just look at the stuff out and then to the tank.
Okay.
And things there, um.
Plumbing electrical is state, so anything in that state, we wouldn't have to initiate anything on that right away, but do the, like she said. Or Ms. Brittany said, do the, what we think we're having the most problems with, and then.
Location, footings.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think one of the push for that was, uh, area contractors, because. You get subcontractors that come in and build inferior products and they undercut them by the price, but they build an inferior product, so they're saying, if we're gonna build these homes. Let's all be on the same playing field.
Well, they should be licensed. I think in any of these cases, they should be licensed, whether you're a plumber, electrical, builder. Whatever you're doing, you should be licensed to do it in the county like you do city. Anything they have licensed, we should license. Plus, that's gonna help get that inspector and pay for some of that stuff that we're talking about. Those licensing fees are gonna help.
And it'll be applicable, or square footage will be applicable as well, right? So if we're, you're building a eighteen by twenty-foot. Yard shed, we're not gonna have building inspections on that, or are we?
This is built off.
I'm not even sure the city inspects those. I don't know for sure.
Any way for the county to get reimbursed by the person getting the building permit for the building inspector?
That, by.
Like, through the fees.
Fees.
Yeah, you pay the fee.
You pay the fees for building inspections.
So we have to get another full-time employee that could, that salary could be offset by the cost of, for the building permit?
Yes.
But it depends on what you require them to inspect.
Well, it, it's kind of, with our mileage. Cost effectiveness on some inspections are gonna be probably. More, I mean, if you look at it, what they charge for like, uh, with city, I'll just give an example of a, a roofing permit. Some of the basic ones that I've bought were eighty, hundred and twenty. You know, and. Somebody has to drive from here to Wall and, and out and do an inspection. Wages for that time, and are you really, you know what I mean, right?
That's why I think.
And if you did inspections, you would probably do, if you did inspections, though, you would be like, I mean, you'd have certain ones, but. You could have a list in Wall instead of just that, instead, we have to go inspect it right after you built it. You could do inspections based on, just depends on, there's all kinds of stuff.
That's tough to do, and, I mean, it depends on how you set it up.
That's what I'm saying. Depends how we go there, but I think the, the main thing I'm hearing. From the bad-built houses in the county and people buying amongst relatives and different people. Is, um, that bottom line inspection that they have a license to build homes. Or whatever they're building, roads, whatever. I think that's our number one first, and then go from there. My opinion from having a contractor as a husband.
And you could also look at the three zones and then start with the, the municipal, the center kind of zone. The ones like in the valley, those kinds of areas first, and then go west and maybe.
Ron's more expensive and ours not.
But yeah, I mean, that, that's where you'd look at, you'd look at the, the center of the, the city where you're seeing the most building, the houses. The turnover of homes is typically in the valley. Those are where you're seeing most of the turnover, turnover of homes in the county.
Do we have any other, um, conversation or discussion on number eleven, or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve eleven with any adjustments on it?
Just some things to check on and.
I think.
Just check on a couple of things, the.
It's a motion by Drews. Second by LaCroy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for all your hard work on this, Brittany.
Thank Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany.
So Brittany, with, with the changes and suggestions that were made today, knowing that you'll need to get back with, uh, the.
Rick.
Rick. Uh, I know, Ron asked, you know, the Forest Service to have an opportunity to take a look at. Are these things are gonna be able to be accomplished within the next two weeks? Cause the next meeting we have scheduled is December eighteenth.
Gary and I are gonna try. We're gonna get ahold of Rick this afternoon, and we have this document. I can send that off to Rodney, um, pretty quickly.
And maybe if you need help, Holly, Holly's good at looking up stick, stuff quick, I'll just tell you, just from.
So, and I don't think we have like the document of this to make changes. I think Rick does, so that's what we'll have to get with Rick, um, to make the changes.
Well, I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think the, the changes need to be completely reflected in the document.
Okay.
But they would need to be written out. And suggested as to where they're gonna go, what, what change of language is gonna go where, you know?
And then have him put it in once they're final.
Right, that's what I look at, because I, I would see us having a hearing yet on the eighteenth. But then, uh, future date in January or whatever, of seeing the actual final product at that point.
The document, maybe at the meeting in January, once we make the changes on the eighteen.
Cause we're down with that, it goes back to planning commission.
Okay.
That, that was kind of where I was just gonna mention. It seemed like we had some pretty minimal changes. Do we need to actually have that special meeting? Or could we just stay late on Tuesday? Is it over?
I think it's already been published that we're gonna meet on the eighteenth.
Yeah, it's already been advertised for that meeting.
It could be a couple hours. Hey, any other discussion? If not, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Drews, second by LaCroy, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Brittany.